Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, April 11, 2022. We'll start with roll call. Selectmen O'Connell present.
Gary DePomo present.
Greg Bendel present.
Kevin Tyrell present.
Lilly Maselli present. If you could all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first, we're going to do the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, numbers forty, forty A, forty-one, and forty-one A. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved. There are no approval of minutes this evening, so we will move right into appointments. Our first one this evening is the recognition of James Gillis as a member of the Shawshank Tech Regional School Committee. Mr. Gillis. If you'd like to join the mic, you're welcome to bring any of your family members with you as well. And then I'm going to hand the reins over to Selectman Bendel.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your willingness to have us on the agenda. And, Mr. Gillis, thank you for joining us. We really appreciate your service, so we wanted to have you in. We know that you finished your time on the committee at Shawshank a short time ago, but due to COVID, we weren't able to celebrate your career there at Shawshank. But we wanted to have you here tonight to thank you for your many years of service, twenty-seven, in fact, along with another really good guy who we'll see shortly. But we really appreciate the time that you've spent away from your family, the time that you volunteered for our community to represent Wilmington on the Shawshank Committee. And I'm speaking tonight as a selectman, but also as a proud graduate of twenty years ago at Shawshank. Really appreciate the things that you've done to make Shawshank such a wonderful school for a lot of kids like me and for future generations. It's because of guys like you that we have such a great schools, two great schools in Wilmington, between Wilmington High School and Shawshank Tech. And so, we wanted to bring you here tonight to celebrate you. We have a citation and recognition, but I want to appreciate the chair allowing me to set this up and to say a few words and to thank you, Jim, for all that you've done and for this community. And we know that you had a really illustrious career before your time as a member of the committee at Wilmington High School and then brought that expertise to Shawshank. And obviously, it's rubbed off, everything from the beautiful baseball fields, which I know you had a big part of over there, and many other things. So, on behalf of the committee and the citizens of Wilmington, we really appreciate all your years of service to the Shawshank Committee.
Thank you, Greg. I'd like to thank the selectmen for having us this evening. And it was a fast twenty-seven years. Snap your fingers. As we always told the freshmen when they came in in orientation, snap your fingers, four years are going to go like that. And all the seniors would come in and say, "Mr. Gillis," you know, like that? Twenty-seven years, wow. Right, Judy? It's fast.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I echo Greg's sentiments and appreciate all the time and dedication and effort you put into it. What is the one thing you will miss the most?
Well, the one thing is how fast it went, actually.
Yeah.
But the people that we've worked with over there, the staff, and the support from the town of Wilmington has been terrific because we were able to enhance all of our facilities, as you well know, and everyone did just a fantastic job over there.
Always great to go out on a high note. I have a son over there, and he loves it, and we love it, so.
Well, we have a great product over there.
You do, you really do. I'll open it up to the rest of the board here, starting with Mr. Selectman Kyra.
I just, I can't say Jim, and I can't say Mr. Gillis, I have to say Coach, because you were my coach in high school, so whenever I see you, it's always Coach. And you've.
You've always been one of my kids, Kevin.
You have dedicated your life to the kids. That's what it is, to the students. And it shows, and it's reflective upon all of the students and the student athletes and from when you were in physical education, I like to, you know, we say gym teacher, but, and then you became the athletic director, and you were the coach of the football and baseball team. And just, you just immersed yourself in, to the lives of so many. And there's just nothing more that I can say, other than thank you for what you've done. You've shaped minds and educated young adults. It's just, the volunteerism that is in this community is in you. And to have someone serve twenty-seven years in an elected position. Not many people step to the plate to say that, as a baseball coach, that you are. And you stepped to the plate, and you continued to hit home runs for the community in Wilmington and for the kids at the Shawshank Tech. So I want to thank you.
That's a great metaphor, by the way. Thank you. Sure, I thank the committee. I'm really humbled this evening. Appreciate it.
Selectman DePomo.
Yes, well, I have to call you Mr. Gillis, because you were the athletic director when I was in school. So that was what I learned, to call you then. And I just want to say congratulations and thank you very much for all of your years of service. I feel that you're timeless. You have been here, you were raised here, attended school here, you were an accomplished student athlete yourself, and then you came back and worked within the system and helped student athletes like myself move forward through their careers and go on to college and other things. I'm grateful for that. And then you continued that labor of love when you retired and brought it to Shawshank. And the wonderful things that have been done are a big credit to your leadership and the leadership of others. You literally have helped others transform that institution to be a flagship in the state in terms of education. And it has taken the concept of the vocational school to an elite level, and that's a credit to you and all of your colleagues. So I appreciate that. When I think of you, I think of dedication and service. You come from a long, familiar line of success and dedication to the town of Wilmington. Gillis is a household name. It's a well-respected name. And when people talk about you and your other siblings, they hold you in the highest regard. And that is because you have done so much for other people, and you have truly made a difference, not only in my life, but in other people as well. And since that, I say thank you very much. Say congratulations, and I wish you the very best. And hopefully, you're going to enjoy some downtime, some travel, and play some golf, and do all the things you have to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And then I will say that you were an easy sell, because you were a terrific young lady and a student athlete. You were outstanding.
I just want to echo what my co-war hearts here have said. And to see how the school has grown over the years, that you and Mr. Peterson have been there, is just amazing. And I want to congratulate you. Enjoy playing golf. Especially with this other guy you're going to be given a high time to. And just enjoy it and have fun. Congratulations again, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
I just echo what has been said. Certainly, twenty-seven years is a significant amount of time in terms of civic duty. Now, there's an awful lot of folks out there that oftentimes will serve as armchair quarterbacks, offering their critique and their criticisms, but seldom do they come forward. But those folks like you, you know, it's, I'm sure there were tough times, you know, time away from family. With any position like that, an elected position, you're called upon to make decisions, oftentimes tough decisions. And so, the compensation isn't in dollars, but it's certainly in lives changed. And so for that, I thank you for your services.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gillis, we're going to have you stay right there, because our next appointment is a recognition of Robert G. Peterson as a member of the Shawshank Tech Regional School Committee. Mr. Peterson, please join Mr. Gillis at the table there.
Thank you.
Next class of chairs over there. And again, I'm going to hand it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Peterson, thank you for joining us, and it's nice to see you two back at the table again.
You'll see us together next week. We're going to Aruba.
Oh, nice.
Is that an invitation for us?
You're welcome. I didn't think the teachers liked us on the other side of the table, by the way, in negotiations.
We do tonight, for sure. Thank you for being here also. Really appreciate it. And just by way of background information, for those of you who don't know, Bob was appointed in 1994 to fill a vacancy at John Gillis', and it was a temporary vacancy, or so Bob thought. And then twenty-seven years later, here he is. But he's also had a very successful career on the committee. Brought a lot from his time as an educator, early on in life, and then also his expertise with his own law practice that he has here in town. But obviously, another gentleman that comes from a long line of volunteer in our community. And when you say the Peterson name, it's well respected as well, just equally as respected as the Gillis name. But I think that it's so important that you're both here, because we need to celebrate guys like you. It's difficult to get people to step up and run for office.
Yep.
And when we have people who have done it for a combined fifty-four years, like you two, we ought to celebrate that. And that's why we want, it's so important to have you here tonight, to celebrate your careers. And I know you probably weren't expecting this, and you certainly didn't do it to find yourself here in the autumn of Town Hall in 2022, but we really appreciate it. I know, again, as a graduate of the school, you both served while I was a student, you know, back in the nineties. And to think about how far the school has come from that time until today, and the direction that it's headed is largely in part of gentlemen like yourself. And so, we really appreciate the bar that you've set for volunteers going forward. Your professionalism, the way you prepared for meetings, and the way that you weren't afraid to tell the truth when it needed to be said, even if it was under difficult circumstances. And so, I think you really paved the way for guys like myself and others, and young ladies who are looking to volunteer for their town, that if you're thinking about it, that you ought to look no further than you two. And the way you operated for twenty-seven years each is to be commended. So we really appreciate your service, and I appreciate the chair's ability to say my name.
Again, my pleasure. Again, I echo Mr. Bendel's sentiments, and I agree, you know, the Gillis name, the Peterson name, you know, very well-known in a good way in Wilmington. You know, some of us know your kids, your grandkids, great family. And it really is, I mean, it's so hard to get volunteers, as we all know, I mean, everybody has busy lives. But to actually dedicate yourself to, you know, volunteering for, you know, anything, but nevertheless, twenty-seven years is amazing. And you've both had, you know, your day jobs and your careers and your families. So it really just speaks volumes about the character of both of you, and I thank you both, you know, for your service. And I hope it is an example to others that, you know, you can volunteer and have an illustrious career as a volunteer and do such good. So thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. And I think Mr. Gillis would agree with me that it's easy to stay for an extended amount of time when what you're doing over there is a labor of love. And we were lucky enough to, for me, twenty-one years of my service at Shawshank, and I think Jim, twenty-two, we were lucky enough to serve with Charlie Lyons. And for those of you who never met Charlie, probably the finest superintendent in the Commonwealth, and he led the direction of Shawshank Tech. And he's really set the future of Shawshank Tech, and we were just really the stewards of his work. And it was a pleasure to serve with him, and it was a pleasure to serve with Jim. Kevin, I also knew him as Coach at Austin Prep, and I can tell you, I like him a lot more now than I did then. No stories now. But thank you very much for having us both.
Of course. Selectman Kyra.
Yes, Chair, I want to echo Mr. Bendel and Miss Maselli's comments. You know, dedication to service, commitment, professionalism, the decisions that you had to make on behalf of the students. You know, sometimes it's not easy to make those decisions, but they're the right ones because you deliberated. You looked at the whole picture, and you made a determination and a decision. And that's sometimes not easy to do. But the two of you, the one-two punch from Wilmington who served on the school committee, did so at the highest level. And I just want to thank you for the service that you gave to the town, to the students, on behalf of the community. We could not have had two fine gentlemen serving on the school committee of Shawshank Tech. And I want to thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you.
I too want to say thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations. Obviously, I heard you've been a huge fan of Peterson as well, and your family's history here and the legacy.
Your family is just so admirable, and you are just a beacon of light and hope for young students and all your leadership. I know you to be a critical thinker and a creative problem solver, very good at finance, very good at relating to everyone, regardless of age or ability, or who's at the table, and coming to a common ground. And that is a unique skill that you have, and it's a gift. And it's a joy to work with you, to negotiate with you, to talk about big, important things and make decisions. And you've always been very candid, open, and honest, and have been able to give the straight talk in a way that's palatable for people to hear, even if they're not getting the answer that they want to hear. And I also believe that that's a skill and a talent. I thank you for taking Shawshank with your colleagues to the next level. The two of you have represented Wilmington admirably. I wish you the very best with what you do with this additional free time that you've found. I thank you very much. I know your family's here, and it's so nice to see that your children are in service. Your son has done a lot for this town and continues to do a lot, and that's a reflection of you and how he was raised. And so, what you've done for all kids of Wilmington, I appreciate that, and I thank you. I also appreciate what you've done to collaborate with other communities that are represented at Shawshank. For us, we deal strictly with Wilmington. For you, you're dealing with other communities that send students and have leadership at the table. So your role is even more challenging, because you have to work with budgets from varying communities that make contributions to one school and have to make that work. And you've done so with style, with class, and with success. So, thank you very much. I wish you the very, very best, and congratulations on all your years of service.
Thank you very, very much, Judy. I appreciate it. And I would like to think that the involvement in community and in family that you see with my children who are here this evening, I got from my parents. And I'm really no different than you or the Kyras or anybody else that's here this evening, or the Gillises. I think that's what makes this community so special. And I am just passing along to my family what my parents passed along to me. And it's really no different than your family, or Jim's, or Kevin's, or anybody at the table. So thank you very, very much. Agreed. Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Gary.
It's an honor knowing you, number one.
Thank you.
Seeing what, again, what has been accomplished while you two gentlemen were on Shawshank, it's amazing to see. But compassion has always impressed me more. You could go to, I can go to you, or anyone could go to you, and have an issue that they want to, they want help with, and you're right there. And it shows within your family. To see what you've passed along to your children, we know that in future years, this town is still going to be good. The pride, the pride that you show, being from Wilmington on the board, has always impressed me. The compassion you have and the joy of life that you've shown and you show your children. You can't speak enough about it. Now that you're heading to Aruba, you're going to leave your son alone for a while. And enjoy life, have a good time, just pass off all the work on Rob, and life will be good. But congratulations again. I wish you nothing but the best, and enjoy.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Echo the comments that have already been made. Certainly, twenty-seven years again is an incredible amount of service. I can remember, just kind of one clip comes to mind for me back, back in the day, so to speak, when I first started here, and I was probably a little bit more nimble of foot. I remember playing basketball with you and a few of the folks from down here, and you were a fierce competitor then. And I think have been a competitor in a good way throughout your time working in your practice, as well as working for the community. And I think that has shown, and again, I think the legacy that both you and Jim leave is something that we in Wilmington will be proud of for many years to come.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, we'd like both of you to come up. We have a certificate for you. And if you'd like to bring up your families and introduce your families, and we'll get a picture. That would be great. Come on up. They're running.
Well, I can bring my wife up. Like this, where Grant is and off the game's all the boys, so.
I would love it if the board would join me for a picture.
Who would you like us?
Where's that? Just in front of the, just be careful of the court. Yes. Yep, we can just find her right there. Yep, right in front. And first, I'm going to just read these certificates of appreciation. We have one for Mr. Gillis and Mr. Peterson, and they both read, "In grateful recognition for your outstanding contributions, exceptional performance, and dedicated commitment to the highest standards of excellence as a member of the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational School Committee, your character and leadership are certified by the work and dedication you have unselfishly provided to the town in its success." So thank you very much for this reading. Oh, my goodness, I'm honored. You should, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I can't believe you played basketball with Chip.
He has to be down there, shouldn't he? Thank you both, gentlemen. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement.
You too.
Okay. And I do want to just thank Selectman Bendel for bringing this up to honor Mr. Gillis and Mr. Peterson. It was most definitely what we all deserved, and I'm glad we were able to do that.
Thank you.
I do want to mention that the board, we are all wearing an article of blue this evening for autism awareness, and we will do so at our next meeting in April as well. So continue with appointments. We have Paula Looney, Town Engineer, regarding the order of alteration of layout for Lowell Street. Mr. Looney, good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, me and Paula Looney, Town Engineer. I have a review in order of alteration of Lowell Street with the board. This is related to the Woven Lowell Street Intersection Project. Specifically, this layout alteration will accommodate a right turn lane and sidewalk widening along Lowell Street. I have provided an aerial photograph. It's on the screen, and it's pointing to where the layout alteration will occur for the intersection design. It's a twelve-foot strip along the frontage of 203 Lowell Street. The, this has been completely coordinated with that property owner, who gifted or donated an easement to the town for this specific purpose. With respect to the intersection project, we're on schedule. We're advancing with one-hundred percent design, and we expect to be shovel-ready by this time next year. Prior to town meeting vote, this is an article on warrant for town meeting. If the board must vote on this layout of alteration, if you vote in the affirmative, the town manager has an order for the board to sign. And I appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'll open it up to the board with, yeah, Miss Kyra.
Paul, just a quick question.
Sure.
At that intersection, will all sides have a right-hand turn, or just that one side?
Just that one side, but all turns, well, all approaches will have a dedicated and protected left-hand turn now.
Okay.
No, that was my question as well. Mr. DePomo. All right. Thank you, Mr. Looney. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul.
That would be, if this were to consider, would we take that now to our policy, or do you want to?
You can take it up.
You want to do it now? Okay. Yeah, we can take that up now, so Mr. Looney can, doesn't have to hang around if he doesn't want to. Okay, so we're just going to go out of order here to do a board to consider the execution order of alteration of layout relative to the Woven Street and Lowell Street Intersection Improvement Project. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Looney.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, on our last appointment, we have the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, MBTA, regarding the rail crossing operations and efforts to address lights and gate functions. Mr. Gonaville, am I saying that correctly? Deputy General Manager of the MBTA. Mr. Gonaville, if you can introduce your folks as they come up. I just want to offer some summary comments just before we start this. The fatal accident that took place in the early evening of January 21st was jarring to all of us and suddenly called into question the safety of simply passing over rail crossings. The loss of life was a tragic, sense of tragedy and completely avoidable. We have all become much more tuned to the function of the lights and the crossing arms at rail crossings throughout town. And unfortunately, we've had numerous instances recently in which crossing arms have been down for no apparent reason, or generally do not appear to function properly, which has added to the lack of confidence and anxiety and frustration with Wilmington residents. After what town officials initially perceived to be a lack of attention to the importance of these issues, I am heartened to see what appears to be more focused and attention paid to the Wilmington rail crossings and a willingness to work with us to improve communications. I do want to acknowledge the efforts of State Senator Bruce Tar and State Representative David Robertson, who were instrumental in facilitating some constructive discussions, and appreciate the MBTA's willingness to have some of your key decision-makers participate in these many scheduled conversations over the past week. And we are continuing with our bi-weekly calls. And Mr. Gonaville, why don't you, you have a PowerPoint presentation this evening?
We do.
Okay. So once the presentation has been made, I will ask my colleagues on the board to offer comments and questions. And then, after they have offered comments and questions, then I will turn it to the audience to see if they have any questions or comments. And I ask that any questions are directed through me, and do please state your name and address when approaching the mic. I will now turn it over to Mr. Gonaville, and you can introduce your team and begin your presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Mr. Hold, Town Manager, thank you for having us here tonight. First off, I think I would like to, as you said, introduce the team of who I'm joined with. First, the gentleman to my right is David Scory. He is the President for Keolis North America. So he is here tonight, joining us to help discuss with us the, tonight's presentation. It's important to note as well that Keolis is a key partner for us at the MBTA. They are our contractor who is responsible for the overall operations and maintenance of the railroad. We, the MBTA, have oversight responsibility, though, for Keolis and their operations. Also joining us tonight is Abdullah Chazai. Abdullah is the General Manager for Keolis here, overseeing our contract locally. Michael Muller at the end is our Executive Director for Commuter Rail. incident that occurred on, on January 21st. First off, that is, still remains an active investigation, so we are really extremely limited on what we can say as it relates to this particular accident. But what we can discuss though are some safety enhancements that the Keolis team has put in place since the accident itself has, has occurred. First off, what they were able to do is begin and go forward with a quick refresher training for all their maintainers, particularly on the, the crossing gates itself and particular to the, the crossing gates that were, that were at this particular intersection. The dispatchers are required to get confirmations of, of the work that is going on at that, at that crossing, but also more importantly, they are required to confirm that that crossing gate has been returned back into a state of functioning and, and regular function prior to leaving the, the single bungalow itself. New signage has also been put in place and to, to ensure that those maintainers are doing the appropriate checks to ensure that the crossing gate is also returned back into a functional position. And then lastly, excuse me though, it's not lastly on the, the slide, but the maintainers are required to remain on-site until a train passes through and they can verify that that crossing gate is again functioning permanently. One thing I do want to mention here is that I think the fear, frustration, angst that, that the board, the community has right now, I want to say that the, we at the MBTA certainly understand that and I've been at the T now for over 20 years and even before coming here, we all shared a conversation about each one of us, it is our jobs, it is our jobs, no matter a tragic incident as this is or any incident that happens on our system, it's our jobs to learn from that and do whatever it takes to make sure it doesn't happen again. So, if there was anything I wanted to leave with this community tonight, I want you to know that you have the full commitment of the entire leadership team of the railroad to not only address this tragic incident to make sure that this happens again, but also to ensure that we're root-building the trust of the community. And as we go to the, to the next slide, Michael, if you don't mind. This is a summary of the number of gray crossings that we have here in Wilmington. Clearly, we have, we, the railroad, are a, a member of this community. We have an impact on this community, we understand this. Right now, we have 11 gray crossings here in Wilmington and each day, those crossings are activated 300 times with a number of trains that, that run through. This is an active railroad here. Not only is MBTA trains using, using the system or using these three branches, we know that there is a significant amount of freight traffic and AM traffic as, AM track traffic as well that runs the railroad and runs on the railroad through your community. We can go to the next slide, Michael. What we wanted to do here was just give an overview to everyone just as it relates to, to what are the requirements? One, who oversees the MBTA from a safety perspective? And then, what do we do or what is the, the testing regime for the signals, excuse me, the, the gate crossings themselves? First off, we are, remain on the, under the oversight of the Federal Railroad Administration, the FRA, and they, they are responsible for the safety oversight for us at the, the MBTA and, and Keolis. We try to, at a minimum, meet all of their requirements for testing and in many cases, we go above and beyond a lot of their requirements as well. The FRA regularly audits and conducts inspections as well of, of the MBTA and Keolis' activities on a number of aspects about, of, of running the railroad on daily basis. The testing and maintenance regimes of the crossings themselves, so the gate crossings are maintained and have a preventative maintenance inspections every 30 days, then there's an increased inspection levels that happen every 90 days and then beyond that, once a year, and then lastly, 10 years. In each one of those increments, there's more, a more detailed test and inspection that is conducted of each of these individual gate crossings. And lastly, the signal maintainers themselves, the signal maintainers are highly skilled and trained electrical technicians. The training itself takes a minimum of one year before a signal maintainer is essentially certified to go, go ahead and begin doing work on the railroad itself. We can go to the next slide. So, these next few slides, we thought it would be, be helpful if we could quickly just walk through how a, the gate crossings work and, and essentially how the gray crossings function. Certainly, for, for follow-up Select Board member questions and certainly any questions that the, the public may have, it helps to have a full understanding of how this is functioning and how they work to then make a determination on what is the, some of the best, best, best explanations to, to some of the ongoing issues that we are working through. So, the, these next few slides will essentially depict how a gray crossing works. If you can picture, the black bar in the middle is a roadway and I think we can see that the dashed lines in the middle are, are essentially the rails. You'll see there are four, four horizontal red bars above the, the, further smokes to the left says Approach Circuit, then there is something referred to as the Island Circuit and then to the right is the Exit Circuit. When a train approaches, we can hit the next slide, Mike. So, the way a crossing gate works is there is a small amount of electricity, a completely small, safe amount of electricity that is placed into one of the rails. When a train axle crosses or enters that Approach Circuit, what it does is essentially completes the loop of electricity which then, and it's just, this, again, it is a small, small amount of, of voltage that is actually, and energy that is in these rails, but that creates the signal to then tell the gate to begin to activate. We can go to the next slide, Mike? So, as the train is proceeding, it proceeds through, it begins to proceed through each one of these circuits. At these, at this point in time, both in the Approach Circuit and in the Island Circuit, the crossing gates are activated. We can go to the next slide. When the train enters the Exit Circuit and it is the last axle of the train enters that Exit Circuit, and it's important to note as well that the, the logic, so to speak, of the crossing gate needs to see Approach Circuit, Island Circuit, Exit Circuit before it deactivates. So, if it does not see the train cross 1, 2, 3, it will not deactivate that crossing. But once it has a successful read that that last axle has passed into the Island Circuit, that is indeed where the, the crossing gate itself deactivates. So, the Safe Mode, and this is, this is an area I know that, that we've had several conversations with the Select Board with, and the Safe Mode itself is a default that the crossings will move to. Essentially, if there is anything abnormal that the crossing gate sense, basically senses, what it will do is it will default to this Safe Mode, which is gates are down, lights are flashing. Some examples of things that will trigger the Safe Mode, and we're going to get into some more specifics about that as we go through this presentation, but some examples of things that trigger the Safe Mode can be something as simple as overheating within the bungalow or loss of electricity or, which is electricity or power going to the bungalow itself. Salt and, salt and standing water which conducts electricity also can lead to this type of, of a, of a Safe Mode. In addition to that, if there is a mechanical failure or a hard, or hard, or a hardware failure on any part of the crossing gate as well, it will default into this, this Safe So, one of the things that we have been in, in discussion with, with during our bi-weekly calls is just a discussion on the reported, reported incidents of this Safe Mode activations of the crossings here in Wilmington. This is a three-year, three-year look-back of the, the crossing gate incidents up until including here to date. You can see, excuse me, that we have, we had 49 incidents in 2020, 57 in 21, and 36 in 22 so far. So, we are certainly on, at the moment, an upward trend as it relates to the number of the Safe Mode activations that we're seeing on these crossings. The slide is a little bit too small and certainly for anyone sitting in the audience to really be able to see right now what is broken out in the pieces of each of these pie charts, but we depict it a little bit differently on the next slide. So, here on this slide, there, there are a number of, of items that lead to, lead to this discussion. The two largest bars that you can see, particularly for 20 and 21, are broken gate and no defects. So, the broken gates are typically, if, and this does happen not just here in Wilmington, this is something we see broadly across the system where the gates themselves are impacted by a car. It can be some, something usually as simple as even the gates coming down on a vehicle as the vehicle is, is sitting within, within that intersection as the train is, is, you know, still vehicle having time to safely exit the crossing, but the vehicle itself being struck by the gates as they come down can cause what is referred to as a shearpen in the crossing gates themselves, which is that broken gate. No defect is, is obviously an item where the signal maintainers go out and there are no defects identified and we're going to talk a little bit about that as well as part of our, our action plan that we've, we've been working on. But to the right, you can see that wiring controls and salt, if you move those two other items out, salt and wiring controls are some of the leading, leading other drivers of these Safe Mode activations of the crossings. These next few slides, I'm going to turn it over to my, to David Scory to talk through some of the improvements that Keolis has been doing to the railroad, really to address some of these key areas that we've been seeing for these activations of the, the Safe Mode for the crossings.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. So, as Jeff has already introduced me, I'm David Scory, I'm the President and CEO for Keolis in North America, but actually, prior to taking on this role, and I took this role up in September of last year, I was the CEO and General Manager for Keolis Community Services. So, I've been here in Massachusetts, working on this railroad alongside the MBTA team for over five years. I came here in 2016. So, I know the system reasonably well and, and I'm here to support the team in, in everything that we're doing to improve the performance of the crossings and to address the issues that have been highlighted. So, Jeff described three key issues when we looked at the Pareto analysis of what we're seeing on the crossings. Issues with salt causing safe activations of the crossing, but causing the gates to come down when they shouldn't. Issues with wiring and controls and then broken gates and, and so in these next few slides, I want to talk through what we're doing to address those three issues. So, this first one is about improving the drainage in the areas around the crossings and you might think, well, what's that got to do with what we've been describing? What we see particularly during winter when we have storms and we have a lot of salt being applied to the roads is that if there isn't really good drainage, particularly if the ground is frozen, we can get an accumulation of water and water with salt in it forms a tracking path for electricity. So, actually, it, it allows the voltage that's in the one rail, as Jeff was describing it, to track across to the, to the other rail and simulate a train being in, in the area. And so, that will bring the gates down even when there's no drainage. And so, in the top right, you can see the typical conditions that we, we've noticed in some of the crossings here today where the ballast, so this is the stone that you see alongside the railway tracks and that's there to keep the track, you know, firmly in position. That's, the shoulders of the ballast are higher than they should be, so it's, it's preventing adequate drainage and, and, and causes that accumulation of water that we were talking about. So, if you go to the next slide, please, Mike? And here's an example of some of the conditions that we spotted here. So, you can see alongside the railhead, the ballast is too high, it's not, it's not got that nice kind of chamfered finish that, that you saw in the diagram on, on the previous slides. So, what are we doing about that, Mike? So, we've got a, a program of activity that's going on. We actually started this past weekend where we are visiting all of the crossings, we are addressing the, the ballast issues, reshaping the ballast, cleaning up the areas around the crossings and making sure that the drainage is, is adequate and that we're not going to get these tracking paths. So, that's an eight-week program and as I say, we've just started this weekend and we'll continue that in the coming weekends, of course. So, on to the second area and this is the improvements to wiring and controls. So, through the inspections that we do, obviously, we assess the quality of the wiring and the controls, but we've really taken it to the next level now and we're doing what I would call glass casing. And by that, I mean that we're putting the crossings in, 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 you know, the best possible condition that they, they can be in as far as wiring and control systems are concerned. So, we're proactively changing out some of the wires and the, the, the red circles there are on some of the, the wires that connect the track to the control systems. We're proactively changing out those out irrespective of the, the visual condition that we're seeing to ensure that we've got fantastic contacts between those wires and the railheads. We're also changing out some of the other control systems, the shunt that's, that's highlighted there is a key integral part of the system. It's there so that as the circuit is terminated, that it terminates properly and it also has a role to play in detecting where the train is within the circuit so that the gate activates at the right time. We're changing those out and we're recalibrating all of the systems to make sure that they are absolutely in, you know, in, in exactly the right place to function seamlessly every single time. And then, the third action is that we are installing cameras on crossings throughout, throughout the network. The cameras are currently wired in to the bungalows, they will be wired in so that they can be viewed remotely, that will be a, a next stage of the upgrade. Just for clarity though, the cameras are not there so that the engineer of a train can see the crossing before they approach. The engineer has no visibility from those cameras. This is so that in the event of an incident, whatever the incident is, whether it's a damaged gate, whether it's a report of a problem with the crossing, we can, after the event, look at the camera footage and properly understand all of the circumstances that were occurring. So, with gate damage, understanding how that damage came about, are there things that we can do to make that damage less likely, you know, whether it's our own road markings, those sorts of things? And in the event of a fault being reported and our engineers getting out there and finding that they can't replicate that fault, we'll have the footage that will demonstrate exactly what was going on at that crossing at that time to better help us get to the root cause and to eradicate that issue, whatever that issue is. So, those are the programs that we've got going on right now. I'm going to hand back to Jeff, I think, just to, to round out the presentation.
And certainly before, well, still sticking on the camera topic as well, that's going to be valuable for us on the no trouble founds as well, because we'll have the ability now to really be able to go back and visually be able to see, no, was there indeed an activation of this crossing gate and for whatever reason it just happened to clear by the time the signal maintainer got there? And particularly for some of these environmental conditions that we just described now, there is, there is a probability that that could potentially happen and these cameras are going to be a vital piece of that investigation to allow us to really be able to determine if indeed there was a crossing gate issue. So, really again, getting at that no trouble found code that we had seen earlier as one of the key designations that, that they have found. So, the, the next slide, Michael, thank you. The, the next steps, obviously, we're going to continue to, to work through the number of the upgrades and work that we're going to do as it relates to even continued enhancements that we're going to make. I think it, again, we're going to be, continue to make enhancements and improvements as we begin to learn more and as we continue to investigate. The, the, and then obviously, the work that they're looking to do right now, Keolis, their goal is to have this all done and completed at all of the crossings by the end of May and that's that entire scope of, of work that David just walked through for each of us. And then obviously, we want to continue to have the, the open communication that we have with first, not only our, our bi-weekly meetings, but just certainly communication with the town as we go forward. The, the next slide- is, there is a probability that that could potentially happen, and these cameras are going to be a vital piece of that investigation to allow us to really be able to determine if indeed there was a crossing gate issue. So really again, getting at that no trouble found code that we had seen earlier as one of the key designations that, that they have found. So the next slide, Michael, thank you. The, the next steps, obviously, we're going to continue to, to work through the number of the upgrades and work that we're going to do as it relates to even continued enhancements that we're going to make. I think it, again, we're going to be, continue to make enhancements and improvements as we begin to learn more and as we continue to investigate. The, the, and then obviously, the work that they're looking to do right now, Keolis, their goal is to have this all done and completed at all of the crossings by the end of May, and that's that entire scope of, of work that David just walked through for each of us. And then obviously, we want to continue to have the, the open communication that we have with first, not only our biweekly meetings, but just certainly communication with the town as we go forward. The, the next slide, we, we certainly had to put in, and I, I, I want to preface this with saying that, you know, it is, it is our responsibility, and we certainly understand the impact that the safe mode activation has on just the logistics of, of automobile traffic and just on, on the town, but we have to put this in there. If there is a grade crossing incident, it is so important that we are called, that that number is called and that gate crossing is, is notified. What immediately happens is essentially that call goes to, to a operator that is on twenty-four seven that will send that to the dispatcher. All trains on that line, whether they be freight, Amtrak, or, or the MBTAs, are put into a stop protect mode, which means the trains are slowed down and they have to be walked through those crossings. So again, the, the most important thing is that if and when a call comes in of a gate crossing down, please notify that number because it immediately sets off a chain of events that will slow the trains down on the line and require them to stop and be walked across that particular, that particular crossing. And then obviously, in parallel to that, also dispatches signal maintainers out to, to the crossing itself. So I think that, that is the end of our formal presentation, but, but Madam Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions that the board or community may have.
Thank you. I, I'll just got to comment on this. I think this is great to, to bring out to the public because, as we know, people may not see that, you know, that these signs are there, and I know some rail crossings when we've had issues have been misidentified just because, you know, residents may think it's one thing, but it's actually called something else, you know, we, you know. So I think this is really important that we, you know, make sure we push this out to our residents as well so that if they do, they call this, and then of course, you know, let the town, the police and all that thing know, but just so we have the right, the right station rail reported. So I'll open it up to my colleagues here. If you want to start, I'm happy to start, Mr. Uchira.
This, first, I appreciate you being here, all of you coming this evening, and I want to thank you for the presentation. I also want to thank Judy O'Connell, our MBTA represent, representative, representative from the Board of Selectmen for really taking the lead role on our behalf. So Judy, thank you for that. Again, thank you for being here. Just to that sign, now, are those signs going to be at each crossing?
They are on each crossing, they are on each crossing across our network.
Okay. Are they, because I haven't, I must have missed it, so they're up there now?
They are. So they're up there. If you look, and this is, this is, I believe, standard for railroads, I think at least across the entire state of Massachusetts as well.
Correct.
And so these, these signs, so not even, even off of the MBTA's territory, these signs are on every crossing. You'll see they're, they're on the, the horizontal arm of the crossing gate itself. You can see they're, they're generally kind of in between, in between the flashing lights themselves.
And I was saying, that's what I was saying, I never noticed them until in one of our conversations, you brought it up, and I was mindful, like going over a rail crossing to see where it was, so I understood what you guys were talking about, because I, I honestly, as a resident, I didn't know they were there, you know, so that's why I think it's important to.
I would just want to add one comment. You know, I say this respectfully, they're not large in scale and size, so if you're driving.
Yeah, they're small.
You probably wouldn't be able to read it and track the number and call it to a familiar driver. You'd probably have to stop and, and, you know.
Yeah.
Secure the information. So it's, it's not a large plaque, but they are there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I had never noticed it before.
Yeah, no, it's, it's circled, yeah.
I didn't notice it until these meetings prompted me to.
Yeah, same. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Safe mode, you talked about safe mode. Does that mean that when there's a problem or something's out of whack, that the, the gates come down automatically? Is that what safe mode means?
That's correct. That's correct.
And.
And the lights, excuse me, the lights will flash, flash as well, so the lights will be flashing, gates will come down.
Okay. And also notification, I, I heard you mention that when you receive notification, do you notify the town officials if there's being work done on the tracks or if there's an issue that you've received notification on? Because I, I didn't, I didn't hear that mentioned.
I think one of the things that we are looking to do as it relates to some of our program work or scheduled work, and this, this came out of the conversations that we had during our biweekly meetings, is being a little bit more transparent and, and communicating to, to the town very specifically of the work that we're going to be doing, and, you know, at least notifying individuals within the community that the work will be going on or happening for that particular crossing. As it relates to, to the maintenance and maintenance that's happening of our, our systems, whether we have, we have track inspection crews that are out every day, we have signal maintainers and, that are in and out of, working within our bungalows every single day. And then Wilmington itself is an important community for us, the North Wilmington Maintenance Facility. We house a, a number of, of both track and, and signal and, and other maintenance crews for the railroad here in Wilmington. So they are, they're really out focusing pretty much on a daily basis to the, to railroad, both here within, within this local community, but also some of the adjacent communities as well.
No, and I, and I understand that, I guess what I'm hearing from you is that you don't call us up all the time, that there's regular ma, maintenance or routine, but you, you have to understand that the community's gets a little scared now when they see someone out there working and they see one of us and say, or it goes on the community board, or they call the town hall, or the police department, and they don't know that there's someone out there doing work. And it would be nice to, to know that, just, you know, as a matter of protocol, I guess, for the time being, would be my, my opinion. And how about the distance from when a train hits those, those little electric, what, what's the distance from when it gets, when it hits it to when it reaches the, the gates that come down? Is it a mile, a half mile?
So that's a good question, and we have, within this community, there are, I believe, a couple different types of grade crossings. The more, more modern grade crossings actually can sense the vehicle's speed, and they will make those adjustments to, to basically the length of that approach circuit, so to speak, based upon the speed that the train is traveling at. Typically, though, the, the railroad, the, the grade crossings and the crossings themselves are set up for the maximum allowable speed of the track at that point in time. So let's say the maximum allowable speed is sixty miles an hour, that approach circuit trigger is, is done and placed at an appropriate point to ensure that there is, what is the, the amount of time?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty seconds?
Twenty. So it's based upon the train having a minimum of twenty seconds or more.
Thank you.
Before the train.
Sorry, I didn't ask you.
Depending on maximum allowable speed, it could be anywhere from eight hundred feet up to three quarters of a mile. In this area, the majority of it is between a half a mile and three quarters of a mile in advance of crossing is where that circuit goes up to.
And then at that point, the train starts to accelerate, it starts to go down in speed from sixty miles to, I mean, is that how it's, is that automatic?
If the train's approaching crossing that is in service, the crossing continuously looks at where the train is in relation to, to its distance from the crossing, and the crossing continues to watch that, continues to monitor it until the train goes through those three circuits that were described earlier, the approach circuit, island circuit, and then exit circuit. If the train stops in advance of the crossing, let's say the train stops for whatever reason, a quarter of a mile back, maybe there's a tree on the tracks, some debris, train does stop, the crossing will see that and recycle itself. Train starts to move again, crossing sees that train start to move on the approach, and will then reactivate the gates.
How long does it take for a train to, to come to a stop?
The average, say, say a commuter rail train going sixty miles an hour, just about a half a mile.
It, it is important to note, too, here in, in Wilmington, a number of those three circuits overlap. So if you think about like Glen Road, Clark Street, and I think Main Street, if my research is correct as well, those circuits overlap because those crossings are so close. So in other words, you can be in the approach circuit but the exit, exit circuit of one, but the approach circuit for, of, of another. So a train stopped in one particular crossing may, may, or outside of one particular crossing could trigger an activation of another crossing further ahead or advanced on the, on the rail itself.
And, and I'm just going to go a little bit off track, so to speak. Back several years ago, maybe twenty eighteen, and maybe Mr. Hull can verify, it was when I was Chair of the Board, and we talked about that, the Haverline on North Wilmington. And one of the concerns back then was the train stopping right in the road, preventing emergency vehicles from, from going through at certain times of the day. And we, we addressed that at several meetings with members of the MBTA and Keolis and, and myself, Mr. Hull, and, and the Legislative delegation, and even went to the State House and had meetings, and we discussed the trains going up forward so it wouldn't stopping before, and the MBTA said that wasn't possible to do that. And then we talked about maybe limiting ridership, taking, you know, attendance of how many people get on and off, but we didn't want to stop that from happening. And then it was decided that we would go on some sort of a list for a platform to be built down there so that the train would stop before, or I believe it was going to be after. And we were on that special list, I think back in twenty eighteen, we got on there, and most recently, within a year and a half, two years, Senator Ta came to us to say that we received a million dollar grant to move forward with that platform. So I know this is, I'm throwing a curveball at you, but I'm, I'd like to know what's going on.
Sure. Certainly happy to discuss that. I think there is a plan underway. I think we are, we are prepared to essentially move the stop forward. I believe that's the plan. The issue that we have is the, the, at, at North Wilmington on the crossing itself, there's that raised area, which we kind of refer to as, as a mini-high. That raised area is for accessibility, so that people that are in mobility devices can get on and off of, on and off of, of trains, or really anyone that needs the assistance of that raised area. We're currently working with our federal partners, particularly the FTA, as it relates to the moving of that mini-high platform essentially forward, and the potential of what that would trigger as it relates for other improvements that we would have to make to the station itself. So we are working through that right now, if, if, and I think we're optimistic that we will be able to get through that issue. It's certainly something that I think we can easily talk through, maybe give a, a bit more of an update on, but we remain working with our federal partners as it relates to different, different pieces of requirements as it relates to the station, the station upgrades and accessibility upgrades that we'd have to do to the station in order to move that mini-high platform forward. And I think with the, to, to be, you know, blunt, the, the upgrade I think that we would be looking at is, would be a full upgrade of the station, which right now, that million dollars that is programmed, or the funding that's programmed for this, would not cover a, a full, full build out of a, of a new station. However, moving the station forward and building a new mini-high platform is currently what is in our plan. I think that's currently what we had, what the MBTA had discussed in the past. I was not part of those conversations, but certainly I believe what the, the MBTA had has discussed in the past. And I think that is a reasonable path forward that we are, again, just currently working through with the FTA before we are able to execute on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you all for being here. Appreciate your taking the time to be here. Obviously, you're very important to us, and obviously, that's recognized by you as well, by your presence here this evening. I appreciate also the presentation. I found it to be very informative, and so I appreciate that information. I also want to compliment my colleagues who have been instrumental in, in having this happen, Chair, and of course Judy, thank you for your leadership on this. I appreciate that. I'm pleased to see the action steps that you presented here this evening, and I think that my fellow residents will be as well. Obviously, you can imagine that this is the topic of conversation in every area of town, every, every square inch, every soccer field, you can, everywhere we go. I think we've lost track of how people are asking us what's going on with the crossings, understandably. A couple of questions, if I may, for you. First, you mentioned at the beginning, the investigation, any idea on the timeline of the investigation?
So the, the authority itself, we have, we have participated in, in, we've participated, Keolis has participated, we've done a, a level of internal investigations, but there are other outside agencies as well that are currently investigating this with us, and we are still continuing to collaborate them. They are agencies outside of the MBTA, so I honestly couldn't tell you, and I, I would if I could, but I honestly couldn't tell you what their timetables or their schedules are. They do update us as they're requesting any further information, but certainly, once that is done and once we are at a position where we can talk a little bit further about this, we certainly commit to, to the community that we want.
Great. And just as a follow-up, is the NTSB involved in that investigation?
No, they are not.
Going to that last slide that you saw with the blue sign and the emergency number, you referenced a dispatch that goes to, that's an MBTA dispatch, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so.
Technically, I believe it's Keolis. And then to get a little bit more technical, I believe on the south side, it may be Amtrak in some areas, correct? Sorry, getting probably a little overly technical, but yes. So for the most part, yes, it goes to a Keolis. Here in Wilmington, any of those calls will go to Keolis.
Thank you. And you note, you mentioned the steps that are taken once that call is received. Is the Wilmington Police Department part of that dispatch? Are they notified when this is, when one of these calls comes in and, you know, these events are triggered?
So if a call is made by a resident or a civilian, I don't believe at this point that we will contact or call the Wilmington PD. I think, I think though, to be honest, it was certainly, I think, we could take as an action item, leaving here, doing that. I, I certainly know that they're represented here and certainly recognize that, that a number of the call-ins that we've had have come from Wilmington PD itself. So let us take that as an action item. I'd like to kind of talk it over with the group.
Yes, please.
And I, just to be clear, I'm in no position to speak for the police department, I'm just curious if that was part of it. But I see Officer Furwisch is in.
Dan Furwisch, the Traffic and Safety Unit. We definitely obviously encourage the residents to contact us if they have a gate issue. What happens is we send a patrol car to go investigate, and the officer will take a look at the situation. What will end up happening is our dispatch has a, a phone line, you know, a number that we call that is set aside for police. So we are in contact with Keolis Dispatch. We can kind of give them a rundown of what's going on. It also allows us to figure out what kind of resources we need as police to try to, whether we have to reroute traffic or we have to send emergency vehicles or school buses a different direction. So that, it would be nice if we could get some notification from them, but we also encourage the residents to give us a call, so that way we know what we can, we need to do, and we can definitely reach out to Keolis and the MBTA if necessary.
Thank you, Officer.
Thank you. And you can see where I'm going with that one. I mean, I, you know, again, I don't want to speak for the police department, and I would leave it up to them whether they thought it was advantageous, but in my mind, you know, they're the ones that are on the front lines, they're there, you know, just a few, you know, a few feet away most times, and so I guess it's worth asking, you know, going forward. So thank you for that. And thank you, Dan. You mentioned the, in, in two thousand twenty-two so far, we have thirty-six incidents already. At that pace, we, you know, I'm pleased to see we have these action steps, and I have no reason to believe that they won't help that number stay where it is or remain, you know, remain reasonable. But, you know, without these action steps, or, you know, this, that would put us on pace to be over a hundred, more than double the last two years. And so do you have an indication of how many of these incidents took place, of the thirty-six, after January twenty-first?
So we have, I mean, you, you can see from, from the presentation, sorry, it's, the slide's not up, I just.
Sure.
The slides. We have that data, we have that data going back of exactly what happened pre the, the date, of the, pre the accident, and then obviously following the accident itself. You know, one of the things that, and it's a very good question you're asking as well. You know, I, the, short while ago, I had the opportunity with, with the team to sit and speak here in Wilmington with the, the lead maintainers for the signal system and the maintainer that was actually assigned to these, to the, to do this work here, and was, was asking them that, kind of that specific question of kind of what are we seeing, what was different this winter versus other winters as it relates to the salt? And there was an explanation that was really given, which I think a lot of us have seen as well, that this was a unique winter where there was a, a freeze and a thaw and a freeze and a thaw, but the ground itself still remained. but the ground itself still remained frozen. So that water just pooled up. And, you know, that is a belief and as David had presented, one of the key areas of where we think the salt, and if you look on that bar chart as well, you will be able to see that the salt itself is significantly higher than what we have seen on other crossing incidents. But you're correct. I think it is our responsibility to really make sure that we are addressing these safe mode activations and that we're doing what we can to correct that.
To that point, you know, obviously, two hundred ninety-two crossings statewide, you know, miles and miles of rail. I can't imagine, you know, the job that you all do every day. But, you know, what's your level of concern with that number, thirty-six? I mean, you see, you see numbers from other communities. How does that compare? You know, I, obviously, like many, I'm, you know, heightened to this now as of, you know, as of January twenty-first. Whereas, you know, to be honest, January twentieth, I wasn't thinking this way. And I'll fully admit that. But, you know, what's your level of concern with that number of thirty-six? I mean, does that concern you? Is that something that is on par with communities our size with two, that many crossings?
So, I mean, first off, the Wilmington community, as we saw, I mean, the number of crossings that we have here in Wilmington is probably larger than most of our other communities. And frankly, I don't even know where if there's any others that have as many. Maybe, okay, I'm seeing a lot of nods from the team that's here with me. So we treat, and when I say we, I'm speaking not only for the MBTA, but the Keolis team as well. They watch and monitor these data and these reports. There are, there are reports that are submitted to me at a very senior level of the organization for all different levels of safety and maintenance activities that happen broadly across the system. So I guess to answer your question, you know, whether it's here in Wilmington or across the entire MBTA's commuter rail service network, you know, we watch that. And yes, the, if there is an uptick of anything happening across the system, it's our responsibilities to go out and fix that. So does the uptick of this concern us? Yes, it does. And we have a responsibility to address that. And, you know, we are, right now, have identified these few key areas within Wilmington that we want to work on, that we feel are contributing to some of these safe mode activations. And, you know, we are going to continue to watch this. And again, we've committed to continue the conversation with the community to keep you updated on what's happening and how we're progressing. And we will be honest as well about the safe mode activations that we're seeing or the crossing incidents that we're seeing in the community. To be, you know, to really be able to evaluate if the things that we're doing right now are making a difference, because it's certainly our goal to do that. So yes, it does concern us, but it's our responsibility to make sure that we're taking the right steps to take care, to address those issues.
Thank you. I want to be respectful of my time. So I just have one last question if I may, Madam Chair. And so, as I mentioned, we have about, roughly about three percent of, make up about three percent of the crossings statewide here in town, which is obviously a very small number. But, you know, if I had to guess, unfortunately, we probably make up the majority of deaths this year, which is obviously, we can all agree, tragic. So when we are approached by, you know, our neighbors and people say, what's going on? You know, I don't feel safe about crossing, you know, what should I do? How should I answer that person? I think tonight's presentation helped me personally. But for those who aren't able to see tonight's presentation or want to hear it right from us, their representatives, you know, what would, what would be that message to them? That it's safe to cross and action steps are being taken?
I think, I think the first step would be that, that you know that you've met with us and that we are here presenting that, no, we are accountable for this. It's our responsibility. We have to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And it's our job, I think I had said, you know, the frustration, angst that the community feels, we understand that, we understand. And you're right, the accident is something that we work every single day to make sure it doesn't happen. So if there was anything, it would be my commitment, our commitment, that we are going to work to ensure that that does not happen again. And as we go forward and as we learn more, we're going to continue to make improvements to the system to enhance the safety of it. That's our responsibility.
Well, I really appreciate that and I appreciate this presentation, each of you being here. And I intend to help spread this good word.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for coming, all of you. The town will appreciate it. I have a few questions. As far as the new station is concerned, we're, are we talking a year down the road, two years down the road, or is it unknown at this time? I mean, this was, I thought, I thought this was on the fast track for quite a long time, but it sounds like now there's more delays in it than there's, than anything else. And that does make me concerned due to the fact that we have had instances where the train has stopped right on the roadway and our emergency vehicles were unable to get through. So I am very, very concerned that we get that station up and running so that trains will not be stopping in the middle of the roadway. So can I assume that we're looking at a year, maybe two years down the road? I mean, I know it's out to bid now.
So I would love to be able to commit to you that that's what the schedule is. I just can't tonight. Again, we can easily come back to the town, let you know where we are. Again, we are working with the FTA just to ensure that we are in full compliance by making this move and what we're looking to do. I do know from conversations both with the team and with Keolis that we have, we have a plan to execute. We know what we need to do. We just need to get final approval from the FTA before we go forward with this. So again, we can come back to the town and the community this evening. I couldn't and I wouldn't want to create any false expectation. I really don't know that answer.
I appreciate that immensely. Other question I have is the maintenance bond you have here in Wilmington. I may be wrong and that's why I'm asking the question. Is that one of your larger maintenance bonds in the state? I know, that's excluding Boston, I understand Boston. But isn't that one of the largest?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
I would check it. Yes.
But it's not, is it maintained twenty-four seven or?
Typically, every day twenty-four seven.
Oh, okay.
Even when I have a train that's running, we still have indicators available for the control.
Thank you. As far as the equipment, I do understand that this equipment has to be very sensitive. And I can appreciate you coming out and making this statement that because of the water and salt, it does trigger concerns with your equipment in those areas. Question I have is, how old is this equipment that is being triggered by water and salt? We're in New England. We understand that we're going to get bad weather. I would, I would be under the assumption that as you're preparing to or as you're building these lines, you're looking at not today, not tomorrow, but every day. So the concern I have is, is this, do we have older equipment out this way that you are now going to have to address by replacing?
So a great, great question. On the Haverline and the Lowell Line, I think the team can give the exact date, but it is, they are new crossings. They are crossings that have actually recently replaced, replaced as we did the rollout for the PTC network. If you go out to, I believe, Sweetheart South next to what I've been told was the old Sweetheart Factory, you'll see an old, an old bungalow and sitting right across, across the rideaway, there's a brand-new bungalow. And that brand-new bungalow houses all the control equipment, which is modern logic controllers. And that system, I believe, is active on both, all the Haverline and Lowell Line. The Wildcat has some of the older style, but I do not believe they are actually that old. But it is not as modern as what we just replaced along both the Lowell and the Haverlines. There was something else I wanted to say and I completely forget, forgot about the, so the question was, how old is the equipment, correct? Yeah, so I, do we know the exact specific date of when they were placed? Jody?
All new stuff is state of the art. It's two years old, three years old at most. The, I play the role of the old subject, I wrote, but that's being replaced as well. It's all, it's all coming. It's something that has already been done because we had the Lowell Line shut down for quite a long period of time. All that work had completed while we shut down. The Haverline shutdown is coming late this year or maybe next spring. And that finishes off all of the rest of the equipment installs.
Thank you.
It is worth mentioning as well that, and this was something that we even, through conversations with the local signal maintainers, they have essentially a bit of a playbook. They, it's the start of the winter season, they will go out and make adjustments to those crossings and make basically adjustments to those voltages that both Dave and I were referring to. So they'll, they'll essentially fine tune those crossings for, just as you said, of the salt knowing the winter's approaching in order to allow us to, you know, prevent as much of these safe mode operations. And that's not just done here in Wilmington. That's broadly across, across our network. The winter itself, and it's not unlikely, this winter required a fair amount more than what has been done in the past of the maintainers having to go back and make some adjustments to how they've set the frequencies of these crossings based upon those environmental conditions. So they do have essentially, to put it simply, they have a usual winter playbook that they typically follow. This winter did require them to have to make several adjustments throughout the winter based upon kind of that freeze thaw, but the ground still being frozen deep below that we saw throughout the winter.
Yeah, I was going to mention that as well, but just to, you know, emphasize a point that I think we've made a couple of times. If, if the conditions deteriorate and we get this salt, then the crossings will come down more often than not. So they come, you know, it's, it's that safe mode activation. And so the calibration, the fine tuning that Jeff was talking about is to prevent those, you know, those additional activations. And at this point in the year now, we'll be going back and recalibrating. Of course, hopefully, the winter's behind us and things are drying out. And so we'll go back and readjust again those crossings that were adjusted earlier in the year.
Thank you. And last question I have is, being a smaller town, we have limited assets. And the assets I'm talking about is our law enforcement. If a, if a crossing has an issue that's going to take an extended time to get back up and we're going to have to have our police over there either redirecting traffic or whatever the case may be, you have your own law enforcement agency. Why can't we get them up here a little faster or have them up here a little more often? That's just a concern of mine because I'm worried about our assets. And I want to thank you very much for coming. It's a hard situation, especially with, with a death involved. But you've come to us, answered our questions, and I do appreciate all of you. The MBTA, as you know, has a kind of bad name when it comes to responding to things. I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to. And I expected this to be in attack mode. I was ready to come in here and just scream, holler and yell, but it's not going to do any good. We're not going to get anywhere. I appreciate very much that you gentlemen appeared and I look forward to the town working with you and not against you. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
And I think just to get back to your point about the police and police department, Superintendent Sullivan, Chief Green, you know, certainly, I can go back and have a conversation with them, but certainly for, you know, Wilmington PD, if there's a need for, you know, shared resources, I know our chief and superintendent work very closely with all the municipal police agencies and police departments. So certainly, I would encourage you to reach out to them, have a conversation with them. And, you know, if there, if there is certainly a need, I know that there would be, they'd be happy to entertain that conversation.
Thank you again.
Thank you. So obviously, the last to speak on behalf of the board, I just wanted to also extend my sincere thanks to the both of you and to your collective team for being here. I really appreciate it. It's been a difficult road to get to this point for all the reasons that have already been stated. So I want to be sincere, some of my comments have been spoken about in quite a lot of detail. But I do want to commend you for coming here and appearing in a public meeting and helping us have an open and transparent conversation with you in front of the residents of Wilmington that are here and at home. This has obviously been a very important topic for all the reasons that have been discussed. I appreciate your professionalism. I can sense the sincerity and believe the sincerity in the true intentions that you have to help us through this. First, most of us were laypeople. We don't have train experience, so we're relying on you as the experts in these positions to help educate us and help us restore the confidence for ourselves and for the families and people that live and work and play in Wilmington that they can pass through Wilmington and generate, you know, whether it's business or personal, that they can feel safe about navigating through our streets so that we can move forward. Obviously, we've talked about a loss of life that can be forgotten and I know that's an ongoing investigation. One thing that hit me through the family who I do not know, one comment that they had made was that they know that if this had happened to somebody else, that Ms. Osville would have been very persistent and consistent in trying to understand why the event happened and would try and want to ensure to her fellow friends, family and residents that measures were taken such that this wouldn't happen again. So I keep that in my heart and in my mind for a lovely woman that I don't know, that I feel a sense of responsibility as a member of this community, as a human being, and bringing the human element to it and being an elected official and also being the MBTA liaison, that I have a responsibility to see this through with my colleagues. And I believe that we've tried to do that. Obviously, it's a partnership. This is not an exercise of playing butcher. I will be asking some questions that I've already asked on the phone calls that we've had. I am not doing that to make a public display, only doing that to convey that to the public. So I'd like to preface my questions and comments with saying that. I understand that you're trying to help and we are grateful for that. That being said, I'd like to proceed with some of the questions that I'd like to ask. And you can comment as you deem appropriate. So just for the benefit of residents, we've been having the bi-weekly meetings. I have been participating on a few MBTA advisory meetings that have been more budget in nature. So there isn't anything significant to report to the public in that regard. Not that it's not significant work, but not related to this conversation. So I'll table that for another update. Through the fine work of our town manager, as you know, if you've been watching the meetings, people that are at home that are also in the room, the town manager through the chair, they've been preparing memos for all of our meetings to try and give a summary description of the work that we've been doing. So we've been trying to keep the public updated. I want to acknowledge the work of State Representative Dave Robertson and Senator Bruce Tar that have been working with us collaboratively as our state delegation to partner with us as a town, to work with the MBTA to try and resolve these issues. As you can see through the presentation, it's very complex. It's very detailed and very involved. We want solutions to make sure no life or pedestrian or car or anyone is in danger. But as you can imagine, something of this size and magnitude is going to take some time to get through as a collective group to see that things move for the betterment of everybody involved. We feel that the spirit and intention is moving in that regard. As you can see, right now, they're doing a targeted review and that is going to take time and you've seen the rollout plans. We believe through our meetings to come that we'll be getting some analytics, we'll be getting some feedback as to what they're seeing out in the field, that we'll be able to give a more substantive update to the public as to what their findings are and if they're noticing some relief in incidents and that we feel that we're on a better track for the future as it relates to the rail crossings and just pass-through in Wilmington. So that story's really still being written and, you know, our town manager is very on top of things. He is communicating morning, noon and night with everyone involved, whether it's the MBTA, with Mr. Mueller through email or through our police department and our police chief and with the board specifically through the chair and to other members so that we're all in the know as to what is going on. So I think the community can feel safe in knowing that everyone is paying attention. And we're going to work through this to the best of our ability and see what this yields. Having said that, the biggest thing is communication. It's communication out to the public for the work that's being done, making sure if we need police services out there. You notice that Wilmington police offices have been out. The MBTA is financing those details so that it's not being paid by Wilmington tax dollars for those police officers to be out. We've confirmed that. So that's, that's a positive thing to report. And then moving forward, the partnership with Keolis, we've been asking probing questions in those, in those meetings, such as when the discussion about safety metrics I had- in those meetings, such as when the discussion about safety metrics I had asked her on the call, can you share with the public about how the signal maintainers are being retrained with the new manual? And I had asked questions, is how do you guarantee that every employee in Keolis is retrained, retooled, and that there's 100% fulfillment of that retraining? I had also asked questions about with the signaling in the bungalows, and also the calling in to report that work has been completed, and staying on site to see the next train pass through. I said this then, and I'll say it now respectfully, I was quite surprised as a layperson that those features weren't already in place. So I don't know if you want to comment on anything that I had to say. I don't know if it's a staffing issue, or it's not a required protocol that, you know, the federal level requires you to do. I think it would be helpful to know, you know, past, present, future, and why those changes weren't in place, and why you've decided, obviously, I think I know why, to incorporate them in now.
So, I think if we could discuss more specifics about the incident, the accident itself, it would make this a much easier explanation as to why that didn't happen before. However, I think, you know, we know that that is an extra layer now of protection that we felt was necessary due to the circumstances of that particular incident, and was very particular to the incident that led to that tragic accident. And then I think, in those conversations, I think we did walk through, you know, the level of training that our maintainers get, the level of oversight and requirements as it relates to the, you know, the regulatory authorities over that. And certainly, if we wanted to have the team members walk through that again, we could do that if you wanted this evening.
I think anything that you want to convey, I don't want to, you know, this isn't meant to be a grilling exercise, it's more just to report to the public, because it's a logical question. There are other industries in the world, that there are redundancies, in the medical field, when you fly in an airplane, et cetera, that there are redundancies, cross checks and safety mechanisms, that as a layperson, it's a logical question to try and seek to understand why some of those safety protocols weren't already in place. I understand we're moving forward, but I think if we know that those are in place, it would help, you know, further restore the public trust that people are truly making sure things are turned on or off as they're supposed to be.
Understood.
So, I can move on from there. In terms of the communications, I think that's key. One of the other discussions that we had had in the TV aspect, I think, or the camera aspect rather, would be helpful, and I'd be interested to know how long it's going to take for that to do a virtual feed, is some of our police reports from our police in Wilmington have differed from some of the reporting generated at the MBTA level, whether it's a Keolis report or directly from the MBTA, and that's not to say who's right or who's wrong, but there's been a difference in some of the intelligence that's reported. So can you talk to the public and to the board how you're kind of synthesizing that data and figuring out what's accurate, not accurate, and when you think the camera piece is going to glean more helpful information?
So, I think that, you know, one, I mean, we can walk through, I think the team can probably give you an update on where we are with activating the LTE or cellular network to get the data back to, you know, be available to us so we can view it remotely. Right now, though, the cameras have to be downloaded from the single bungalow itself, the control bungalow for the crossing. And, you know, that even gets back to my presentation about the no trouble founds. You know, whether it's a report back that, you know, from the maintainers that we were here, there were no issues that were found, now whether that's differing what gets reported, whether through civilian or the community itself, or the local PD, the cameras are really going to give us an opportunity to go back and look and verify if there was indeed an activation. Because I think that's an important part of this and a part of this conversation. And as I said earlier, some environmental conditions could cause the gates to come down, for whatever reason, that environmental condition gets eliminated or removed, whether it's saltwater and that saltwater dissipates and the gates could come back up again. This will allow us to be able to go back and look, to at least be able to see that, no, there was an activation, something happened, we need to investigate this further.
Okay. Now, in terms of the Keolis partnership, can you comment on how long Keolis has been a partner with the MBTA, and what your contractual relationship is, and how long that is contracted for now and in the future?
Sure. So, the Keolis took over the contract in 2015? 2015, correct? 2014. 2014, excuse me, 2014. 2014, Keolis took over oversight of, took over the O and M contract for the MBTA. The Keolis contract is, I believe, the largest contract in the state of Massachusetts as it relates to just overall contracts from any public agency with a private company. That contract is in place now until 2026, and the authority is, obviously, you know, continues to work through and think about that future contract and what a future contract may indeed look like. I think there's, going back to the MBTA's board and our prior fiscal management control board, there's been a number of conversations about the future contract and what that future contract looks like. But 2014, Keolis took over the contract, and that contract continues now, the term of that contract continues until 2026.
Thank you. So it's been talked about, but obviously, you know, to do this role requires funding, which goes through a governmental process, which I know you're well aware of. As elected officials and having a direct line to our state officials, from a short-term, long-term, this is a loaded question, does the MBTA have a vision board of capital improvements that you want to make, that, do you believe that incidents could be reduced if you had better equipment, and is it potentially a funding issue to be able to take things to the next level? Do you have a vision board of what you would like to see for infrastructure, but it's just not financially feasible across the entire Commonwealth, that would help reduce these incidents? Or is it not that simple?
So I think there's a place to invest in the safety system. Right now, the railroad network has had an upgrade in our PTC system, which is a signaling system. We're currently upgrading a kind of another, or an expanded version of the PTC system, which is an ATC upgrade of the signaling system. Now, that is underway broadly right now across our entire network. That is going to bring the authority and the railroad, and it's active right now here on this railroad, a higher level of really protection and safety for the system. It regulates train spacing, it regulates train speed, and it gives us a far greater enhancement as it relates to the safety of the railroad. The authority itself continues to make regular capital investments on all of our infrastructures, so whether it's track, whether it's culverts and drainage, which we've talked about today, about how critically important that is, and then obviously investments into our rolling stock. Now, we currently have a contract that's underway and are going to be adding another additional, at least 75 bi-level coaches to our revenue fleet. As it relates to that future vision, that future contract that I was talking, have speaking about, there is, we have a team even within railroad operations that's really rethinking the commuter rail network and what that could look like. Kind of a mix of intercity and intracity rail, and with that, conversations about possibly electrifying portions of the network, and what opportunities that would give us to maybe make some changes to some of that, the typical, what we call push-pull consist, which is that locomotive and coaches, what everyone's familiar with, to something that's a little bit more of a smaller, more of like, almost like a light rail vehicle that we run on the green line, but running that on portions of the system. That's going to take a significant investment to kind of move to that intracity and intercity rail, and those are active conversations that we have going on right now at the MBTA to think about that longer-term strategic vision of where we would like to build the railroad and have the commuter rail network really look for the future.
Thank you. Not to kind of take it off track, because it's not in the purview of what we're discussing tonight, but something that we've talked at a previous meeting was about the state initiative for the rezoning for around MBTA-related communities and areas with the Department of Housing and Community Development. And my questions in those conversations, separate from the safety issues that we may have and the concerns for short-term, long-term, is that if they have this state initiative in terms of the rezoning to have high-density housing projects happen near MBTA commuter rails and bus transit areas, that that might increase your ridership and have more usage of your system, and if you're already potentially needing certain improvements, to add more ridership and more, a need for that could create an infrastructure cost and a staffing issue. So I'm only bringing that up just to kind of plant the seed, that I'm going to be curious to see how the MBTA partners with the housing initiatives when they want to try and bring a concentration of people to your mode of transportation or in that area where you're the most viable option besides their own car. That could further this discussion for the long term, so I just wanted to mention that to you, because we just had an extended conversation the last meeting regarding the changes that are going to happen. And frankly, we all have to adopt for the 351 cities and towns, so I'm assuming you've heard about that and there are discussions happening.
Yes, so I will say, you know, here tonight, there are the operational team, these are the individuals who run the operations for the MBTA. You know, transit-oriented development and investments in and around our systems where the system is, the MBTA is kind of the key transportation mode, is an impact, it's something that's very important for all of us here at the T. And, you know, that is not, something that certainly doesn't only affect the commuter rail network, that is something that we are dealing with on our rapid transit lines as well, and our bus routes. And I know that there are certainly discussions that are ongoing as it relates to, you know, what that does as it relates to constraints for our system, and then what are the further investments that we really need to do, whether it be, you know, capacity increases of increasing the amount of transportation we can provide on the lines. And I could probably talk for hours about that, but I'm sure that's not necessarily what we would want to go through this evening. But certainly, that is an active conversation that we have internally at the T, is as these housing developments are happening, what are our needs, what is the capacity we have available in our system, and then what we would need to do to really address that capacity.
Thank you, and I'll bring that up, just because we're really passionate about getting our areas fixed to the best of our ability, because when we have future development, that's as a result of this initiative, we'd be concerned in stacking that on top of what we already perceive to be an issue area right now until we get this further resolved. So, my last question is regarding the incidents, and I know my other colleagues had asked about it, can you talk a little bit about your oversight in the sense that, you know, to me as a layperson, I'm thinking that these incidents are quite significant in terms of the quantity and the uptick? Can you talk about how you're regulated, so I say this respectfully, you're self-regulating yourself in this exercise with the targeted review? You have a partner that is in a cooperative relationship that is being financially compensated, you are your own body, how do you report these incidents to a greater entity? And when does it draw their attention that Houston, we have a problem, and that it requires some sort of escalation, and that you need to hit the panic button and say you need help? And how do you do that, and how do you escalate that, and when is it appropriate?
So, certainly, I think, you know, I'll throw the specifics of that question to the team, but what I would say is particularly to the FRA, which regulates the railroad, you know, I wouldn't want to be in a position where we are speaking for them as a federal regulatory agency, but as it relates to the level of their oversight, Ryan, I don't know if that's something that you could maybe help just explain a bit?
So, the MBTA, we have a very positive, very transparent relationship with the Federal Railroad Administration. Their local region is in Cambridge, so that puts us essentially in regular contact with them day-to-day, week-to-week. We do once a week, as railroad operations and Keolis and their leadership meet with the FRA, and we debrief on every bit of incident, whether it's a signal issue or a abandoned motor vehicle on the right of way. So we're in regulated discussions with our regulatory partners, and we look really for industry knowledge, because the Code of Federal Regulations does not establish thresholds that say if you have so many number of incidents, you have to do this, or this, or this. But, we feel the railroad industry and our peer agencies across other transportation authorities, we fight a lot of the same struggles, particularly in New England, where we talk about winter weather and the impacts of all that. So we're constantly sharing ideas to try to overcome some of the issues that we have here in Wilmington.
Thank you. That was where I was leading to conclude, is that, how, I know we're speaking specifically about Wilmington, but I'm just trying to have a full discussion here. How do you believe that the MBTA in Massachusetts stands amongst other states, and specifically Colorado or other areas that have inclement weather? Are there any best practices that you're utilizing now that you may have learned from another rail system in another part of the country? Or are there still opportunities to leverage some of that experience, and perhaps what they're doing there may not be relatable here because of the infrastructure differences or similarities?
Sure. I think that there will always be opportunities to leverage the experience of all of our peer agencies and other operating railroads across the country, regardless of whatever region they're in, but we can always build our best practices, whether it's an operating practice, a testing practice, or even modern equipment, changes in technology, we're always looking at any indication that there's a better way to do it, we always will look.
So, probably what I mentioned too, Ryan, is we belong to several organizations or groups of peers of other transit agencies across the country, both on the transit side, the American Passenger Transport Association, AFTA. They have a commuter rail CEOs group, they have a commuter rail working group, both Ryan and Mike Muller are parts of that, but I believe Keolis and Abdallah are also a part and participate in those meetings. There's a number of other, I believe, Northeast Corridor meetings with all the railroads that operate within the Northeast Corridor, and now, I mean, really, I'll defer to you, Ryan, and Jody, and Dave and Abdallah, I think you guys know that better than I do, certainly.
We in fact feel a call this week through the Northeast Corridor Commission, which is made up of all the operators and owners of the Northeast Corridor, including Washington, DC and Boston, from one of our partners there, asking to assault at train stations, particularly this time of year when the crews are cleaning up, do salt, they blow it onto the tracks, they have their share of signal issues as well. So comparing alternative materials versus traditional rock salt. We also sit on the Commuter Rail Coalition, which is a nationwide group of all commuter rail operators in the country. And again, it's all about sharing information, sharing ideas, because what happens in Chicago could just as easily happen here in vice versa.
Thank you. That concludes my questions, I just wanted to say thank you again to all of you, I appreciate the work that you've done and that we'll continue to do together, and I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to recognize that State Representative Robertson is here, so Mr. Robertson, if you want to offer any comments, I appreciate it.
Sure, I'm not quite sure if there's much I can attribute. Thanks to Chairman Selly, Mr. Hall and Ms. O'Connell, who's act as a wonderful liaison on behalf of the board. I think kind of we worked as an orchestra here. And for the folks at home, Mr. De Palma, Mr. Bendel, Mr. Kyra, all reached out independently to Senator Tar, who is handling the environmental bill amendments for tomorrow, couldn't be here tonight, asked me to step in instead. But every member of the board here has already asked essentially what we as a delegation united did for the T, so the gentlemen from the T, thank you. There's just two things, which, forgive me, as I came in 10 minutes late from a Tewksbury event where a constituent grabbed me with a crisis at the end. For those at home, we're also taking a look at the historical data of previous snowstorms to examine to see if there was a new immersion of some sort of other factor along the way, which led to a spiker, if this is in line. And then, it was touched upon as Ms. O'Connell did so in her last question, early on, the town officials involved with this, the chair, Ms. O'Connell, Mr. Hall, Senator Tar and myself found out that, and Ms. O'Connell specifically referenced Colorado, there was an unfortunate fatality in Denver, which we felt had some similarities to what happened to Ms. Osville here, and the T took that quite seriously, and I know reached out to their colleagues out there very quickly. So I just wanted to say for the folks at home, the members of CODOT with no reason other than the kindness of their heart, again, sensing that a human being lost her life here in a tragedy that should have been preventable, went out of their way to provide details about the encounter there, the FRA requirements, and that we are taking a look at some of the equipment standards that Colorado chose to implement after that fatality, to see if they'd be applicable here. So there's still other things in the work, like many members of the local board here. I find that this is good concrete steps forward, looking to support the T, whether it's financially through line items on the state level, or opera money, or what have you. And thank you, local colleagues there. Once we kind of set up our strategy, it's been an absolute pleasure to work to ensure that this never happens again here, and thank you for, behalf of Senator Tar and I.
Thanks.
Can I just ask one question? Maybe?
Kind of simplified, but you're talking about salt, that when the trucks go over and they salt and they hit the tracks, and isn't it simply tell the trucks when it hits the railroad crossing not to salt it? Or is that too simple? the railroad crossing not to salt it? Or is that too simple?
So at the start of each season, usually at the start of each weather season, we will send a letter to the MBTA to the local DPWs through our chief engineer's office or one of our engineering and maintenance divisions, and to usually request that that is indeed the case, to somewhat limit the salt though through crossings. Admittedly, we know as well, though, that that is something that, you know, particularly like just this very recent weather, and certainly there's a great deal of roadway infrastructure that the MBTA is responsible for maintaining, and we have several plow and sanding trucks that we operate at the authority itself. This was a very challenging winter to manage as it relates to the number of snow, ice, the freezing rain or that mist that would happen, and then we'd get the flash freeze. So from a realistic standpoint, yes. Excuse me, from a practical standpoint, yes, it's, the MBTA would request that you would limit the amount of salt that's being dropped over a crossing. From a practical standpoint, execution standpoint, and certainly someone that's responsible for overseeing a team as well, that is responsible for roadway maintenance. I fully recognize, though, that this particular winter was a very challenging winter. And, you know, with that, there were times where we had to do, at least at the MBTA, a lot of preventative salting in advance of storms. Then we would get rain, it would wash away, we'd have to go back out and reapply that same salt. And in this particular case in Wilmington, we believe a lot of that salt and that runoff just pooled and began to continue to pool kind of off the roadway and into our track beds, which then ultimately led to some of these key areas of the safe activations of the crossings.
Okay. I'm not going to have you with any more questions because I think everybody on the board here handed up.
Excuse me, Mr. McDonald. I'm speaking. I believe everything was answered, and I do appreciate you guys being here. And I concur with Rep. Robertson that the communication between the town and ourselves and your team has been really great, and we're looking forward to those continued meetings. So now I will open it up to the members of the audience if they'd like to ask any questions. I ask that you stand to the mic, state your name and address, and direct all questions through me, please.
Mr. McDonald, I can't speak for everybody in town, but if I had to bet money, I would bet the folks in town would not want trainees in charge of signaling. And some of the comments that I heard were that we want everybody to begin training on the new equipment. I just don't know why we don't.
They train for a year before getting on any equipment. They don't, they're not on there until they are fully trained.
Okay. I just wanted to comment that I would like journeyman certified, expert, proficient individuals in terms of using the equipment. The other thing that I'd like to mention to the gentlemen, first of all, I want to thank you for coming here. You may have received my letter that I sent to the MBTA. As you know, the town of Wilmington pays over a half a million dollars to the MBTA to have two stations in Wilmington. Mr. Hall could probably tell us the exact amount, but just for conversation, the fact that we're paying over a half a million dollars to the MBTA, it would lead me to believe that that's enough money to have sophisticated equipment. So it's just not cameras that gets information sent to the administration. But with the Wi-Fi technology and the other sophisticated technology out there, I would think that there would be a way to have that sophisticated equipment sent to the engineer of the train. Because in my estimation, notifying the administration doesn't keep somebody from getting killed. It doesn't stop the train. I've done some mathematical calculations based on.
Ms. McDonald, could you please state your questions for the team, please?
So you mentioned that the train goes about 60 miles an hour, and that would be, you mentioned that the signaling devices get triggered in 20 seconds. And so my mathematical calculations come out to be that in 20 seconds, at a speed of 60 miles an hour, it would, the train would get the signal at 1,760 feet. And we know that trains carry different weights and it takes different times for the train to stop. Can you tell us, on the commuter rails, the average weight of the vehicle going 60 miles an hour, if he got an emergency signal, how many feet, once he got that signal, would it take for that train to stop?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. No, I was going to say I think that was already answered, but go ahead.
No, so I think one of the things that's important to consider, and frankly, I wouldn't want myself or really any of the team to try answering that, there's a calculation referred to a safe braking distance. We use it both on the transit side and they use it on the railroad side, particularly when they were developing even the positive train control system for the trains. That safe braking distance, though, makes some assumptions on, one, speeds that the trains are traveling at, which is, in this case, is almost a worst-case scenario, and you assume a worst-case scenario, and you also assume a depleted braking capacity for the vehicle. So it is an absolute worst-case scenario. That safe braking distance is what is used and how our signal teams and our signal engineers, and in this particular case, our PTC system is designed by Hitachi, went ahead and designed the overall system that operates. So I want to say that right now, I don't think we could give you that exact answer, but what we do know is that there is a very detailed calculation that signal engineers do to calculate this safe braking distance that is used in order to really, really set up that space that you were referring to.
And can I just add one clarification point? The way that the grade crossing system works is that the barriers will be down 20 seconds before the train arrives. And so, you know, that whole process of monitoring the train's speed and how far it is away, it's designed to create that time difference of 20 seconds that the barriers will be down before the train approaches the crossing.
That's why I was concerned, because I was trying to figure out, because we just had a lady get killed because the gates didn't come down. If there was some type of signaling, like a camera, like you mentioned at some of these intersections, if the signal was sent to the engineer, we'd like to know how much time it would take for him to be notified. The other thing I also wanted to ask is, I know we're relying on the train's braking system to slow the train. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was some type of other braking system, like maybe squeezing, squeezing the wheels like with a sophisticated braking system that was actually part of the train. Not exactly similar, but you know when a fighter jet lands on an aircraft carrier, he's got a tail hook and that stops him? Is there any sophisticated equipment that the engineer could trigger so that the rail system itself slows the train down rather than just the braking system of the train?
So I'm not aware of anything for the railroad. The trains themselves are designed with a pretty robust, it's an air brake system, but there are brake treads and on a number pieces of our equipment, they use discs and rotors, very similar to an automobile or a truck, just a lot larger and a lot bigger. The vehicles also use dynamic braking, particularly the locomotives themselves, where they use some of the electrical energy that the locomotive has to also help offset the wheels and begin braking or slowing the car down, or the vehicle down, excuse me. Now, what you're saying, though, on the light rail Charlie's, the green line, does have something that is a track brake. It is essentially like a big magnet that will drop and that magnet does grab the rails and will slow the trains down. So what you're asking is, it relates to, as a concept, is not a crazy idea. It is actually something that's a practice. We have it on the green line. But for the railroad, and I'm not just speaking necessarily for just the MBTA, but just the railroad industry as a whole, both the dynamic braking that the locomotive brings, and then the robust braking systems on the train is really the industry standard that they have for braking and braking systems on the railroad.
Just, I wanted to just offer some personal experience to you gentlemen, that I actually took the train on the Haverline from Lawrence to Wilmington, to North Wilmington. And I specifically had a conversation with the conductor, and I asked the conductor, I'd like to get off at the North Wilmington stop. Would you please let me off in such a fashion that the train would stop and not have to block Route 62? He said, yeah, we can make that happen. You just have to walk down to the first car. We made it happen. The train did not have to block the road. I got off the train, no problem. I think it's a very simple logical fix that, from the leadership position, to mandate the conductor to have the passengers that get on the train north of North Wilmington, who are getting off at North Wilmington, to be required to sit on that first passenger car so that that train does not have to block Route 62. Because there are times when ambulances have to respond to an emergency or a fire engine or a police officer or something like that. And it just does not make any sense to me that something this simple isn't already implemented. We've had a number of issues when the train blocked that road. And I'd like a commitment from you tonight that that simple, logical fix can be implemented. Can you commit to us with that?
I cannot. And there's a bit of a business reason why we cannot. And it really goes with accessibility. That mini-high platform, that raised area that I referred to, that is at the same location, or at least the way the trains are designed to stop, and I'm going to defer to the team if I get any of this wrong correctly, but the way the stations are designed with that mini-high platform, they're in the same location at every stop across the line. So if, for whatever reason, let's say that stop what you just referred to, if there was someone in a mobility device that was waiting to board the train up on the mini-high at North Wilmington, but the train proceeded through and did not stop at that location, it would be difficult for us. That person would then board, but then we would not line up at the next station or whatever destination that individual would have. So I think making sure that those line up is important. I see Jody Ray standing up to make sure.
I'm just going to add, next station outbound of North Wilmington, Ballavale, mini-high platform at the far outbound end of the platform. So in this case, let's just assume it's, you know, somebody's getting on with a walker. They're going to get dropped off next mini-high, board the train, level boarding, right from the mini-high at Ballavale and get on, and they want to get off again in North Wilmington. They won't be able to walk through the train to get to the front of the, to the front of the train to get off, as you suggested. They would have to try to force, you know, a walker through the very narrow aisles of the train in order to get to that lead car. So that's why all of the mini-highs are built on the, what we call the, you know, the outbound, the country end of the platform. They're all at exactly the same location so that they can start like that. The North Wilmington platform helps people board, but it's not going to board a wheelchair. But it could be built for somebody that was blind, somebody that had, you know, truncheons, walking with a cane, all kinds of other things. It doesn't line up with the other mini-highs. So the whole idea of the station that we've been talking about doing up here is to move the only platform that would be built in North Wilmington would be about 800 feet outbound of the Middlesex Ave grade crossing, which means it's train length away from the crossing. So if a train comes out of Boston, it goes, it hits the approach circuit, it goes across the island circuit, and then it pulls up into the exit circuit, when it makes the station stop at North Wilmington. That is the way to fix the issue here in North Wilmington. So, you know, it works for you because you're ambulatory, you can walk through the middle of the train. But the, you know, I keep going, right? So if you go on Ballavale, next station up, Andover, mini-high, far outbound end. Lawrence, not so much a problem because it's a full high-level platform. You know, Ballavale, I, to the Bradville, all the way at the far outbound end. Havel, all the way at the far outbound end. So every other station that leads you to North Wilmington has you board at a place that doesn't line up with the front of the train at the platform at North Wilmington.
Okay. My question is this. Thank you for your perspective. But when the train comes from North Station heading north, and it stops in North Wilmington to let people off, that train is not blocking the road. So it doesn't make sense to me logically that the train coming from North Station can let people off, but it can't let people off on the same railroad track coming from the north. And the way I see it is, the conductor, all he'd have to do is direct people to go to the first passenger car and direct the engineer to stop that first.
I mentioned to you that if somebody was a cattle walker, they could not go to the first.
I respectfully disagree with them, and I'm telling them why.
Okay. You can disagree, but I'm going to ask you two good questions on them. They are the experts. I'm going to lean towards the experts.
You can disagree with them.
The experts haven't gotten it done. Somebody died. There's all kinds of problems.
Please don't bring that up. We already know.
None of you asked anything that solves any problems tonight. I'm trying to solve some problems. I'm not.
Yes, you are. Do you have any other questions?
Okay.
If not, I'm going to take a recess.
I would just simply ask you, how am I out of line?
You're out of line because you're telling the experts in this room that they don't know what they're doing.
Exactly.
And you're insulting all of us here that we don't know what we're doing. How is that you're the only person in this room that knows what they're doing?
Because I think I've been out there and I got off the track.
Okay.
If they have a problem with the exit.
Sit down or leave. It's your choices.
Get a little platform out there. It's illogical.
Sit down or leave.
Completely illogical what's going on.
Okay. You know everything. Thank you for your comments. I apologize to all of you for that. So I'm going to wrap this up and just say thank you so much for coming out. I appreciate you guys being here. I know it ran late, but it was super informative, very helpful. As Sleck and Bendel had said earlier, you know, we're going to get this out to our residents. Hopefully, there's more watching and stuff. But we will definitely push this information out as we have, and then with our continued meetings and everything. You know, I think this is moving in the positive direction. So I thank you all for coming out.
All right. Thank you for having us.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we call for a brief?
Yes, we're going to just take a short break.
So under Communications, the first item we have is a memo from me with regard to the last MBTA session that was held via Zoom. A lot of this has been discussed and some of the information has been updated with reference to the cameras, reference to the number of trainings that run through the crossings. At the time, they had dealt with three of the crossings in terms of service and review. It looks like it's up to five. So the work Next, under Communications is a memo from Sleck and Kira. I'll defer to him with regard to an update on the Town Hall School admin.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. The Town Hall School Administration Building Committee met on March 30th at Town Hall to discuss further adjustments to the building. The survey results have been completed, which identify water that appears to be coming from the wooded area north of the Bazell Center, Bazell School, down the hill into the pipe that runs underneath the parking lot. Further evaluation of the water source will be performed, including contracting with the botanist to identify the types of vegetation in the site of the wetlands line. Phil O'Brien, the principal, who's our architect from Johnson Roberts Associates, presented a new scheme F, a design for further reducing the length of the building but widening the building as well. The building is still planned to be located to the rear of the existing parking lot against the embankment. In light of the water that was identified, a discussion took place for alternative designs to keep the building away from that area. I offered a different idea, that it'd be an L-shaped designed building so that it would come off of the Bazell School, from the Bazell School out, and then, so if you're looking at the area, and then off to the right. And that would, from the Bazell School out along School Street, would be where the school department would go, the administration, and then going straight across would be the Town Hall area. And at that L area would be the meeting rooms, you know, for the selectmen and so forth, and for the public. I also suggested by doing this, it would bring the structure from three floors to two floors. So that would be ideal to get it down to two floors rather than three floors. Then another committee member, Jack Holloway, suggested that we try the L shape the other way. So we go from the parking lot. So we go from the parking lot out and then we run it to the left, leaving the Bazell School alone. And so Mr. O'Brien is going to come up with those two plans. The one thing, though, Jeff, that I'd like to mention tonight in regards to this, if you could mention to Phil, is that the Bazell School has a basement, and I don't know if he knows that. And if we go from the Bazell School out and then to the right, he can utilize that basement for storage space and probably reduce the footprint even more, the storage space for the school administration part. So if you could give him a call and mention that to him so that when he's coming up with the designs that he's aware of, that there's that ability to put basement there. The committee members agreed to meet on April thirteenth, which is this Wednesday, for a quick review of the presentation that's going to take place at the town meeting on the thirtieth. And following that, the next meeting would be May fourth. That's it.
The next memo is from Sleckman Bendel with regard to a similar update on the senior senate.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Our chair, the senior building committee, met on Wednesday, April sixth, to resume discussions about the location of the building on the site and the interior space. Dan Pelata, our OPM, reported that the survey work had been completed. Site conditions are favorable and there are no unanticipated surface conditions have been identified on the site. Lee Morissette, our architect of Deets Company, reported that the work completed to the parking design to make adjustments from the previous meeting. The access lane extending from the handicap parking area near the building was initially designed to merge with the main level of travel and then drop off access at the main parking lot, which raised vehicle safety concerns. The revised design established that the lane from the handicap parking intersection with the main level at a T. Concern was expressed at the previous meeting. The front entrance was indistinguishable from the remainder of the overhang. So Mr. Morissette redesigned that portion of the building to extend the overhang further than the overhang on the other sides of the entrance. Windows were also included above the overhang on the other side of the doors for further differentiating from the remainder of the front of the building. Adjustments were made to the interior space by moving a small wall, small meeting room wall, and rearranging storage space and audiovisual space near the kitchen area. The committee will have a brief meeting on April twentieth to review the draft report that will be presented at town meeting on April thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, going to correspondence is Communications. There's a memo from Mike Woods, Director of Public Works, and Joel Bailey, Business and Utilities Manager, with regard to a recent grant we received from the Mass D E P. This is a PFOS grant. You recall back in the fall, we had the higher levels of PFOS. And ultimately, the determination was made that we need to change out our granulated carbon, activated carbon filters. And the cost of that was a little under a hundred thousand dollars. Immediately following that expenditure, the Public Works reached out to identify this particular grant from D E P. We recently received notice that we are receiving this grant in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Essentially, this will reimburse the cost for the Sargent treatment plan covered. Next is a memo from George Hooper, Public Building Superintendent, with regard to status of the Wildwood School, the dealing with the remediation. We continue to work with the Omni Environmental Group, who is the licensed site professional. Their costs are being borne by our insurance carrier. Late February, a firm was brought in to remove the ten thousand gallon underground storage tank. And then currently, a temporary three thousand gallon oil storage tank is in place to be used as needed. There have been fifteen locations around the impacted site established for monitoring wells and test borings. There's a structural excavation plan that's been prepared to document the approach for soil removal. And then also, there's an expectation of removing about fifteen hundred cubic yards of contaminated soil and replace it with a clean fill. This soil removal work will start after April twenty-fifth. Being mindful that Wildwood School is a pulling location, the building will be fully functional for the local election on the twenty-third. And next, under Communications, is a notice from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, notifying us that Governor Baker signed into legislation a law that allows for restaurants to continue to provide patio service through April first of two thousand and twenty-three. You'll recall this was part of a law that, given the COVID circumstances, provided for some measure of outdoor seating. Additionally, this law will continue to allow the sale of alcohol for licensed establishments for both takeout and delivery through April first of two thousand and twenty-three. The A B C C recently conducted a public hearing on April seventh to review and ultimately establish guidelines which went into effect immediately. Then this brings us to a board to consider. The first item was already dealt with, which was the alteration of the layout relative to Lubin Street. Second item, it's an access agreement with the Mass D O T with regard to conducting soil boring relative to Route thirty-eight bridge replacement. The access agreement has been provided to Mass D O T, and I'm told by Paul Looney that he just received some marked up comments on that access agreement, so it is not ready for tonight.
Okay.
Should we make a motion table?
Uh, yes.
Okay, do you have a motion to table?
Make a motion to table?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Granted.
The next item is a board to consider a request of Susan McDonald, ESL teacher and curriculum team leader at Wilmington Public Schools to use Rowery Park on May ninth from three P M to four P M, rain date being the sixteenth of May, for the purpose of students and families socializing and to provide information about mindfulness and relaxation. She notes in her communication, there's a recognition amongst the staff about the stresses that families and students have to deal with with COVID. And so this is really intended to try to provide some assistance to family and students.
And is Rowery Park available? There's no games or anything?
There's no conflict.
Great. All right. Do you have a motion?
I move to grant the request as presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? So granted.
Next is a board to consider the request of the Director of Breakfast Services to conduct a Memorial Day parade on Monday, May thirty. Grant the request.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? So moved.
Next is a board to consider the request from Karen Campbell, Recreation Director, to use the Town Common and gazebo for summer concert series on Wednesday, July sixth, July thirteenth, July twentieth, and July twenty-seventh, with rain dates on Thursday, July seventh, fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-eight, respectively. And an additional rain date on Wednesday, August third.
Do you have a motion?
Move to grant the request as presented.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
So we have a board to consider a request of Christina Stewart, Library Director, to use the Swing Green Friday, June twenty-four at ten A M, something called the Big Wheels. Saturday, June twenty-fifth at eleven A M, summer reading kickoff. Tuesday, July fifth at six thirty P M, children's musician. Monday, July eleventh at three P M and six thirty P M, yoga for children slash teens. Monday, July eighteenth at six thirty P M, Todd the Magician. Monday, July twenty-fifth at six thirty P M, Petting Zoo. And then Thursday, August eleventh at five thirty P M, which would be the annual summer bash.
Make a motion to accept as long as those dates are in conflict.
No conflict.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any discussion?
So July fifth, it won't be in conflict with the July fourth festivities, Jeff, if you know. I'm assuming it must have been checked out.
Yeah, no, we're good.
Okay, great. Thank you. All in favor? So moved.
All right, the next three items deal with individuals who work in the Wilmington Public Schools. The first one being Denise Bresnahan, who is seeking to summer employment with the Wilmington Recreation Department. She would serve as the Assistant Program Director for the Tiny Tots and Kids Club because she also works for the school department. There's a two sixty-eight A form, disclosure form, that she has to note simply applies to the board of this. So I would recommend to the Board of Selectmen to make a motion to acknowledge receipt of Denise Bresnahan's disclosure and determine that her employment with the Recreation Department is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from its employee. And this document would be signed by the Chair of the Board.
Okay.
I move to grant the request as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So moved.
This also is a similar request from Erin Cowden, also seeking summer employment with the Wilmington Rec Department. She's the one of the Tiny Tots and Kids Club program instructors. Again, I would make a, recommend a motion that the Board of Selectmen acknowledge receipt of Erin Cowden's disclosure and determine that the employment with the Recreation Department is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from its employees.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
And then finally, we have a similar disclosure from Michaela Ursen, summer employment with the Wilmington Rec, Tiny Tots and Kids Club program instructor. Again, I would recommend a motion that the Board of Selectmen acknowledge receipt of Michaela Ursen's disclosure and determine that her employment with the Recreation Department is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from its employee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
Next, we have a request from Elizabeth Lawrenson, Town Clerk, to make additional appointments of election workers for the two thousand and twenty-two elections, specifically two individuals, Frank West and Karen West.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
We have a request of Kathleen Timmons to place signs on the graduating Wilmington seniors attending Shawshing Valley Vocational, Regional Vocational Technical High School, place those signs on the Town Common. About eighty signs.
Do you have a motion?
Over. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So moved.
We have a board to consider requests of Site One Landscape Supply to donate lights to illuminate the military flag on the Town Common, which is part of an Eagle Skelp project. You'll recall that Erin Danzowitz is pursuing an Eagle Skelp project working with our Veterans Director, Elusimaglia, across his work through the installation of the flag poles representing each branch of the military. Kevin Abely, who happens to be an employee with the town, works in the Parks and Grounds, contacted a firm, this particular firm, to ask if they would be able to make the donation. And they have agreed to donate the lights. The board asked to authorize accepting this donation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, is it possible to seek for the manager to write a letter of thanks on behalf of the board with gratitude?
Great idea.
Please.
And then the final board to consider is the summer meeting schedule. Proposed dates are July eighteenth and August fifteenth.
I will miss the fifteenth. I have a vacation. Any discussion?
I'm open to any discussions. If we wouldn't have the full complement of the board, I don't know what other people.
I can't do August fifteenth.
How other people feel, but, you know, if it's something weird, maybe we pull the board and maybe take up the July date as an approval. And maybe we take it offline and try and work on an acceptable August date that we, I don't want to just dismiss your opportunity to participate without, you know, working through some calendars. So maybe we consider approving the July date and then table the August date to the next meeting and see if we can come to a meeting of the minds or not about a viable date for August that we could potentially have the full board. Does anyone object to that suggestion?
No.
Okay.
I mean, the alternate dates are on the eighth and the twenty-second.
Right.
So we'll just hold off.
Unless people want to field that question now, I'm fine for those dates.
I'm fine with either one of those dates as well. The eighth and the twenty-second.
I'm happy to celebrate Kai's birthday here on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Well, maybe we do the eighth. Can I propose the eighth of August? Jeff, you need to check that. Does that work with everybody?
I don't have any.
Okay. Gary, has it looked?
No, I have no objections.
Okay, so we'll put it out there as revised proposed dates for July eighteenth and August fifth, excuse me, eighth.
I was hoping Mr. Bendel was making a cake, but I guess not.
You dodged a bullet. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion for the proposed dates of July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, now we'll go to public comments. No one's here. Any announcements?
Just one quick one. I'm sorry, I didn't mention this early, but the April twentieth Senior Senate Building Committee meeting that I referenced earlier is going to be remote. Says under announcements in Town Hall.
Okay.
The Chair has decided, because of the brevity of the meeting that's expected, it's just anticipated that we'll be talking about what our presentation will entail at Town Meeting. There actually will be no discussion of decisions made about the Senior Senate at that meeting, that the meeting is expected to be relatively short. Therefore, he decided to go remote. So I just wanted to mention that the April twentieth Senior Senate meeting will be remote.
Great, thank you.
It's still under announcements?
Yes, yes, please.
Just want to wish everyone a happy Easter.
Yes, that's great. It's already here.
Easter's here. Hope everybody enjoys the Easter season and also to remind everybody about election on April twenty-third. It takes about five or ten minutes of your time just to come out on Saturday and exercise your right to vote. So I hope that the community does that.
Thank you. I agree.
Yes, I just wanted to just acknowledge as a board that we are wearing blue for autism awareness. Obviously, April is that month and we've historically done that. So I wanted to just thank my colleagues for doing that and for Bev and the Town Manager for suggesting that through the Chair for us to wear an article of blue for autism. Also, as mentioned regarding the town election, regardless of contested races and non-contested races, it's important that as many people come out as possible. There are a lot of exciting things happening in Wilmington, whether it's this election and the future Town Meeting, that we really rely on people's participation to come out and show their support for their leadership team in the town and also for any of the initiatives that take place at a Town Meeting event. And then, lastly, this weekend, we, I know it's in the important dates, but we will be coming together for the Little League Parade, which is always a fun time. coming together for the Little League Parade, which is always a fun time to do that and join the boys and girls and the coaches, parents, and family in celebrating that. So I'm looking forward to Saturday, as well as all of these other important events that are here. I certainly don't want to just call out one, but that's coming this weekend. And just for the record, just to, to share it now, because I may forget to do so, unfortunately for the Memorial Day Parade, I will not be able to participate in that, so I just wanted to let my colleagues know. I have a family member that is being redeployed military-wise, and so I need to go to Virginia to say goodbye for them to be restationed somewhere else. So I will be in the spirit of military, but it will just not be in Wilmington. So I just wanted to convey that as a public message so that people see that I didn't participate, that I didn't just, not deem it important, but I'm doing a family activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will move on to New Business. Have a new business. Okay. New business will go ranging in important dates.
So important dates, coming up on April 13th is a brush drop off Old Main Street at 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, April 13th, the Town School Administration Building Committee, Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM. April 15th, a white flag raising ceremony here at Town Hall, 9:00 AM. April 16th, as was just noted, a Little League opening day parade starts at 9:30 AM. April 16th is another brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 18th, town offices are closed for Patriots' Day. April 20th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 20th, as was noted earlier, Senior Center Building Committee will be remote, starting at 6:00 PM. April 23rd, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 23rd, annual town elections, polls open at 8:00 AM and will be, remain open until 8:00 PM. April 23rd is Memorial Library, Keep Wilmington Beautiful, 8:10 AM to 12:00 noon. April 25th is Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall Room 9, 7:00 PM. April 27th is another brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Annual Town Meeting is April 30th, the High School Auditorium, beginning at 9:00 AM. Also on the 30th is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. May 4th, Town School Administration Building Committee, Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM. And then May 9th, Special Olympics Opening Ceremony, Wilmington High School, 9:15 AM.
Thank you very much. And now we have a Salute to Service. Sleckman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it's my privilege to present tonight's Salute to Service to Ms. Helen Rothwell Durkey. She grew up in, near Silver Lake and graduated Wilmington High School in 1949. She became a nurse at Children's Hospital, living in West Rockbury, Dorchester. Helen entered the Air Force as a Lieutenant in 1961, and then moved back to Wilmington after marrying James Jim Durkey, an Air Force veteran himself. They were married for almost 60 years before Jim's passing last year. Helen separated from the Air Force in 1967 as a captain. Jim and Helen raised their three daughters in Wilmington and were active in the community. Helen was very involved in the Girl Scouts and loved doing crafts, including using her own spinning wheel and loom to create all sorts of items. So for these reasons, and for her service to our country and our community, we salute Captain Durkey.
Thank you very much. And we do salute her. Thank you for your service. That will conclude our meeting for this evening. Thank you, everybody. Take care. Uh, motion to adjourn? Yes, sorry. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.